Called to order the regular meeting of the Uba City City Council slated for this date and time, if we could have a roll call, please.
Mayor Buckland?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cleveland?
Here.
Councilmember Diball?
Here.
Councilmember Dukes?
Here.
Councilmember Gill?
Here.
And we'll have our invocation, that'll be by Councilmember Dukes, and our Pledge of Allegiance led by Lieutenant Baker of the Uba City Police Department. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for the opportunity to represent our citizens here tonight, to do the business that is before us. We pray that you would give us wisdom and bless all that we do tonight. We ask this in your most holy name, amen.
(inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for everyone participating and not seeing any Kaepernick's in the group. I do appreciate that. Welcome to River Valley High School. You guys are here. It should be a thrilling evening. We'd like you to be involved as much as you'd like to be involved. And then at the end of the evening, you all come up with your agendas, and they'll be signed by the, all of the different council members present. You only have to have a couple of signatures, but you're certainly welcome to ask us any questions during the meeting and become engaged in this process, as well as all the other members of the public. We're going to start with presentations, and we have our public safety report. This is a quarterly report, and our Chief of Police, Chief Rob Landon. And his entourage.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you for the time this evening. This, again, is our public safety presentation. We're going to talk a little about the police department. I'm not going to get too much into the basic structure. I think we've done that every time, and I think people are very familiar, that we run a five-beat operation. I'll talk a little about calls for service, our uniform crime reporting part ones, our areas of emphasis for this year, and then any questions at the end that you may have. So I want to start out with a little pictorial. This is our Peace Officer Memorial from May of 2016 that we do every year in honor of the fallen police officers. Our award ceremony from 2016 this year, and I appreciate all the councilmembers and everybody that had the opportunity from the public to attend. This past year, we had the, I think in the entire time that I've been a law enforcement officer, and I know the mayor was prior to me, I'm not sure how many Medal of Values we gave out, but my 22 years, we gave out one. This past year, at this presentation, we were able to give out three, and that was the three members on my right, the far left of this picture, if I turn my back to you, Officer Brandon Oakley, Officer David Santan, and Sergeant Steve Thornton for their actions in the Hillview shooting incident. National Night Out for 2016, it shows a lot of support from the council that we canceled, we canceled the council meeting in the first week of August, and they all go out on the National Night Out and get an opportunity to speak with the public. At the different neighborhoods, this is the one up on Kendall Court in North Uba City. Just some of the different officers that went out. We had a chance to go out with the public and do the motorcycles. Target helps sponsor that. They give a certain amount, I'm not sure exactly what it is, between $1,000 and $3,000 to help pay for certain costs. We threw that in from last year because it was a neat picture. Again, Mahal Plaza, I believe. We were all having fun that day. And these are all the different people that had the opportunity, city staff, councilmembers, and the officers, Amanda Hopper, the District Attorney. It was just a great opportunity. CHP was there also, Captain Sean Harris, and the different members from his department. So we have a lot of new equipment this past year, and some of the stuff, this is called the MRAP, that's the medical term or the military term for it. But what we've done, we've painted this to make it more friendly to the environment around here, being white instead of the black colors that we have. It's a personnel rescue vehicle. It's able to hold up to 20 people, maybe? 10 to 12 people comfortably. It's got air conditioning as opposed to the last one that we had, and it's able to go almost anywhere. Some other vehicles for the city are not able to go everywhere. This was a, I don't know how that got in there. The fire department actually got a vehicle stuck, and they tried to pull it out with our other vehicle, and we were able to get them both out, so it was a successful day at the end of the day. But it has many uses, and I just wanted to show the sand use on that, that it is able to go in different areas. Currently, and I won't talk about staffing too much at this point in time because we have another staff report coming up. We were allocated 64 sworn positions. Right now, we currently have eight positions that are open. We have three annuitants who are actually backfilling those positions. Some of that's due to retirement, some of it's due to other opportunities. Currently, our recruitment efforts, we're focusing on three different aspects. We have new academy recruits. We have a list of approximately, we have a list of at least 10, but I think there's 20 on both lists that we have for hiring coming up. Then we have a list of people that have already graduated from the academy. We have five on that list, at least five. And then we have one new lateral in background. We have another one coming up, and some of the things, ideas that we'll be sharing tonight are opportunities to get more lateral officers, which is the quickest way to get an officer on the road for us. Lateral being somebody that's currently working in another law enforcement officer that's fully credentialed to work at our staff. We have 25 civilian, we're short two dispatchers at this time. We do 14.65 square miles of jurisdiction, and we do it with five beats. The number-one type of calls, these are our top 10 calls, I won't read them all out, but you can see that we have 10 different ones on there, and all the way from 9/11 calls, suspicious calls, most of those are two-person calls. So anytime we get a call for service, it's not just one officer responding, it's two different officers that are going out there that were responding to different things. False alarms, whether it's a real one or a false, we all treat everything like it was real. And that was for the period from January to June, which is halfway through the year. So comparison to last year, violent crimes are up from 116 incidents last year to 125 this year, so we're up nine. Property crimes are up significantly. Contributing factors statewide increase in violent crimes and increase in property. We're, basically, we have the same trends as the rest of the state. A lot of that can be attributed to different things, like there's, I believe the number that I had was 52,000 less arrests last year because they've done Proposition 47, which takes felonies and makes them misdemeanors so people are out on the streets sooner. There's a lot of legislation that makes it a little tougher for us to do our job because there's less people in prison, and those people that are in prison, the jail time is less, so they're out in the streets sooner. So we are seeing effects of that. We haven't completely come to terms with what is causing our increases, but our increases are almost identical to Sacramento, and they had a B article this past month that I've brought also to share, but I'll just pass it out. So these are all beats, all five beats, and if we were to project it out for the entire year, and it doesn't mean it's going to happen, but we've shown the last three years here, from 2014, 2015, and 2016, we measure Part One crimes, which is the Uniform Crime Reporting Statistics that are required to be reported to the Federal Bureau of Investigations. It includes the major crimes, which are homicide, robbery, assaults, burglaries, motor vehicle thefts, rapes. And that's what we measure, and we send them in, and there's a definition of each, so we make sure ours is identical to everybody else in the country, and we're all reporting the same statistics. So we've seen an increase. If you see the marks halfway through, that's basically where we are halfway, and we've just doubled, we've doubled it. Normally, that probably won't happen because there are slower months, summer is our busiest month, but if everything projected out, that's where we would be, and we'd be above last In comparison to in the past, so what we've done, we've projected it out 28 years, which is how far back as our record-keeping goes, is when we've been doing annual reports. Back in 1988, we had 113.1 Part One crimes per 1,000 people. Currently, we're at 35.6, so it's one-third of the total of what it was back in 88 and half the total of what it was in 1996. We had a major crime decrease for a period of time, and now we're starting to slow, show a same trend. In fact, our numbers, I think, are the same as they were in 2008, which doesn't show And Commander Tappi is going to talk about our Communications and Records Department divisions.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Our communications unit is a very dedicated and critical part of our department. Minimally, they are staffed with two public safety dispatchers, and they handle all police matters, all fire matters, medical matters, all 911 calls, as well as business telephone lines into our agency. From January 1 of 16 to date, our dispatch center processed and entered 27,000, what we call CAD, or Computer-Aided Dispatch Calls. So it's a very high volume of work for them. They are non-sworn personnel, but they do have oversight for training and continuous professional training by post, California Peace Officer Standards and Training. Some of the classes that they have attended this year have been the Required Updates and Certifications for Dispatchers, Advanced Tactical Dispatch Training, Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault Training, Communications Training, Non-Sworn Background Investigations Training, as everyone that works in that unit has to have a background, just like a peace officer, Emergency Medical Dispatching, and CPR certifications, just to name some. Two employees that we're, just like to highlight, we had a, one of our dispatchers, Dispatcher Gettis was featured in the Appeal Democrat this year during the Public Safety Telecommunications Week. As well, Dispatcher Erica Campos was awarded the Purple, or excuse me, the Department's Life Saving Award for her contributions to saving a life through the emergency medical dispatching process. That's our communications division. I think I have the next unit as well. Our records unit, again, is a very dedicated and hard-working unit. From January 1 to, basically, the first six months of this year, this unit processed 4,200 police reports, 3,500 citations, 2,600 subpoenas. They registered 192 sex offenders who resided in our jurisdiction, or who were here long enough to be registered. Copied 4,400 reports for other agencies. They were instrumental and continue to be instrumental in helping us to implement a new paperless report-writing system. We call it Workflow. Of course, it's, they are key in making this work. They've also, this year, implemented a new state law, the requirements for a new state law for use-of-force reporting, and have increased the timeliness by which they put together the Uniform Crime Reporting Statistics every month. So we're very proud of their work. All right, Sergeant Runyon has the traffic unit.
Good evening. My name is Jim Runyon. I'm the sergeant in charge of the Traffic Education and Enforcement Unit. As our title says, our goals are to educate and enforce, and we do that through a variety of programs, trying to reduce injury collisions, DUIs, DUI-related collisions, amongst other things. So on the left are the educational programs that we have. One of the ones we do is bicycle rodeos. We usually do four to five schools a year, in which we bring our traffic unit out to the schools. We provide K through five kids with bicycle helmets if they don't have any, then we come back in another day and set up a little bicycle course for them, aimed at safety, and just interacting with the kids, again, the K through five levels. Some other education programs we offer are the Bicycle Enforcement Education Program. It's a class we offer to teenagers, mostly, that are cited for bicycle helmets rather than having to pay a fine. They can go to this class, learn a little bit, and the ticket goes away. Same thing with the Car Seat Violator Class. It focuses on adults cited for child seat violations. Neighborhood Safety Awareness Program, it's called our NSA program, that's been one of our more effective programs the last couple of years, and it's aimed at reducing speeds in residential areas. We target two streets per month, and usually those streets are chosen by way of complaints or just what we know to be streets where people are driving too fast. People cited on that, under that program, on those streets can attend a class. It's about a two-, three-hour class put on by our traffic officers. It's real educational for the driver. We actually get a lot of compliments on that class after people go to it, and the good benefit is for them is they don't have to pay a fine, and it doesn't go on their driving record if they attend the class. Car Seat Checkup Events is another thing we do. We offer to check up on people's car seats, make sure they're installed properly. It can be actually kind of complicated. We do our Uba Sutter Traffic Safety Booth Fair every year. We did that just this last month. Another program we have, I didn't put up there, was the Student Driver Awareness, and that's, we target outside the high school areas a couple of times a year, focusing on the teenage drivers and moving violations within the high school area. Similar to the NSA program, if they attend a class, we'll dismiss the ticket, no fine, nothing on your driving record, hoping to get a little more, reach the teenage drivers in a different fashion rather than just fines. The enforcement programs, we, a couple DUI checkpoints a year, a couple, several DUI saturation patrols, as we call them. We just put extra officers out on the weekends focusing on impaired drivers, and that's funded through grant money as well. Distracted Driver Awareness, focusing on the texting and the driving while talking on your phone. Again, this is a lot of grant programs that we're able to do. And then the general enforcement of our hazardous violations is obviously our, you know, one of the main things we do day in and day out.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I appreciate that. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Jeremy Garcia. I'm the Assistant Chief at the Police Department. One of my roles there at the department is I'm in charge of our Investigations Division. Component of our Investigations Division is the Net Five Narcotics and Gang Task Force. I threw a few figures up there. I know that we are a little bit short on time, and I'll just touch on a couple of key components. I think it stands out that methamphetamine and marijuana continue to be the major issues. We do encounter, you know, most of your narcotics-related issues here. Butane honey oil labs are, for the last couple of years, have been an up-and-coming and emerging issue that we're dealing with. You know, in years gone by, clandestine methamphetamine labs were the issue. Now we're seeing very few of those, and the marijuana-related butane honey oil labs have become, and obviously, they're very volatile and explosive, and we have had a couple go up in our city. Net Five, their emphasis is on our larger-scale narcotics traffickers, those people trafficking in both narcotics, firearms, obviously gang-related. There's a lot of crossovers. I think everybody's pretty aware that, you know, our gangs and narcotics tend to, there's a lot of cross-pollination there. This is one of our recent cases off of Melton. We took $131,000 in asset forfeiture, a large amount of cocaine, pills, prescription medications, basically a regular pharmacy out of this home. We also recovered 21 firearms, 41, or four of which were stolen. So it was a significant seizure, and these are the types of cases that we like to see our task force focusing on. These are the individuals we like to see get off the street. The marijuana is, isn't, for a long time, most likely will be an issue, however, Net Five, their emphasis tends to be on those. Currently, we're dealing with people that are growing non-medicinal marijuana, growing large-scale indoor operations for the most part, and a lot of times, the product is grown here and shipped elsewhere, and then the money's coming back. Our Investigations Division, currently, we are staffed with four detectives. We have a sergeant, Sergeant Michael Green, who's here tonight. We have two community service officers assigned to investigations, and recently, and I'll talk about it a little bit more, we brought back an annuitant who's doing some good work for us. This past year, for 2016 to date, obviously, we've had, we've had four homicides. Two of those have led to arrests and are pending prosecution. The other two, we are still very actively investigating. It's on our radar every day. We assisted our Sutter County District Attorney's Office in the regional multi-jurisdictional effort at Online Predators. We have one detective, actually, everybody, this is an issue for everyone, but one of our detectives in particular is very passionate about human trafficking investigations. He's worked two large-scale investigations that have led him to, that started in Uba City, and we've gone to Las Vegas and some other places. Community trainings, we've placed quite a bit of emphasis on trying to do some outreach and interact with our business community. Our trainings are, well, we've provided trainings on human trafficking, fraud-related investigations, and trying to basically harden businesses and make them less of a victim. And we've also, some of our investigative folks have gone out, and we've worked with both businesses, schools, some other public service providers, and we provide training in how to respond if we have a workplace violence incident, and we've placed a lot of emphasis on that. We started our year, we had, this year, we had 192 individuals in the city of Uba City who are required to register as sexual offenders per 290 of the penal code. We went out and started our year with compliance checks on those individuals, and out of, out of those efforts, we ended up with eight arrests and two warrant requests. As I mentioned earlier, we added a community service officer, who's a non-sworn individual who basically does, handles investigations and so forth, but does not go out and make arrests. We've brought her into the unit. She, a lot of her time and emphasis is on our missing persons, the component of missing persons that come into our department. There are a lot of reporting mandates, and obviously, we do the best we can to try to track people down and reunite them with families, or at least let the families know that they're okay. Our annuitant we brought in was a retired detective who we brought back, and he's been working on some of our cold-case homicides. I'm pretty excited about some of the work that's being done there. You know, obviously, we can't discuss investigative details, but I would say that his efforts are starting to bear fruit, and we may be able to, hopefully, if everything goes well, there might be some closure out there for some families. Some of the initiatives, things that were, some of our goals, we've, we've been trying to reinvigorate a regional effort as far as bringing all of our detectives, our investigative groups together, sharing information, working more as a unified team. Years gone by, there was a fair amount of emphasis placed on that. As often happens, things kind of, they fall apart. We're trying to rebuild that. We're training some of our, in this day and age, computers, tablets, phones, technology is just, it's a part of every investigation that we touch. So we're training up some of our officers to become high-tech investigators. It's a multi-year process. It can be. It's a long-term investment, and the equipment to do it's very expensive, but we're working some different avenues, and I'd say that we're going to be on the leading edge. We currently are, but we're going to improve upon our abilities. In our business partnership meetings, this is a goal, and I, we're on the horizon for us. We'd really like to build something comparable to our Citizen Academy, but geared towards the business community. But it's a, that's a significant endeavor, but we've got the groundwork laid, and if things continue to progress, I think that's going to become a reality for us, and I'd like to at least take a trial run at it. I wouldn't be comfortable talking as to when we might be able to pull that off, but like, it is on the horizon, and I think it's got a lot of potential.
Okay, so I know our time's limited, so I'm going to speed through this real quickly. 21st Century Policing Briefing. We were invited out to Washington, DC this past year to discuss some of the efforts that we've made. There were 75 police chiefs, Chief O'Brien from Chico, and Chief Eric Jones from Stockton, and myself went there. We had an opportunity to talk about what we've done in the community, share ideas with other people, and I think we've got a lot of great ideas. This is through President Obama's Six Pillars for the Community Policing Forum Task Force that he formed last year in order to work better with our community. So we're looking at them all, and these are the different components of them. The biggest one that I like on there right now is the technology and social media. I think we've always, you know, Uba City's not mill whatever, the most advanced area, but I think we have the ability to get there, and there's a lot of people here that have the education to get us there. So we're going to start using other people to help the police department get back up to speed. That's just Washington, DC. 2006 Priorities. Again, staffing.
Chief, would you go back to the, to the prior slide, just for a moment? The small building back behind you, that would be the what?
That's the White House.
Okay, so when you said you went to Washington, DC, you kind of just skipped over the fact that, that you were a, you were at the White House for a meeting with 75 other chiefs, which is, I think, a very distinguished position for Uba City to have been invited to that, and certainly speaks to not only our police department, but certainly to Chief Landon's abilities, and so thank you for representing Northern California there.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for letting me attend, because it was very interesting, and I did learn a lot, so we're going to use a lot of those ideas as we move forward in the next year, and we'll be sharing them with the different council meetings. Our priorities for 2016. Staffing, again, continues to be the, one of our number-one issues. That, again, is a number-one issue that California Police Chiefs has addressed to all agencies throughout the state of California, and I'll talk to more at that in the next presentation. Leadership development, we want to build leadership for the future. Team building, we've done team building with our leadership to make ourselves stronger, to make ourselves more committed to the department and the community, to make sure that we can reach our potential, and obviously, share that with everybody. Citizen engagement, I know Captain Harris is here today, and we've talked about going out and speaking to different groups with the CHP, so I know they call it coffee with a cop in other areas. We want to do something similar to that, but we want to make it a little bit unique to us also, but we want to engage our community and get out there with them. It's very important for us to hear back what's happening, and we'll probably take that to the school also, because I do a lot of work at River Valley. We want to hear the students' perspectives, because you guys are obviously the future of Uba City. We're working on new massage ordinance. I know that Commander or Assistant Chief Garcia touched on the honey oil. We're looking at a, limiting the butane, the ability to purchase butane in the 2-milliliter capsules here in Uba City, but that's got to be a joint partnership with Sutter County in order for that to be effective. Otherwise, you can cross the street and purchase that. Clean and Safe Uba City, we continue to focus on the issues that we have with the vagrants, and just, not the homeless, but the transients, the vagrants that we have creating issues out in the community. We are looking at that. We're looking to make a joint venture. I know the city council is very active, working with the other different government agencies throughout both counties. Body worn cameras, oh, I brought one and I left it in my car. I was going to show you guys today the body worn cameras. We have two of them out on the street right now. They're very small, they fit here, they swivel, they're really neat, and they tie into our vehicle cameras. So it's not a, it's not, you do one, then you do the other one. You can actually now do them together, joint, they're tied in. We have two of those out right now. We anticipate on buying enough for all the staff by the end of this year and having them out on the road. And that's been a long-term process, because with all technology, every time we think we're ready to buy them, something new comes along, so we finally decided we just got to do it. Gang suppression and violent crime suppression, we really want to do this in the schools. Before the sixth grade, we try to have everybody in Unified, Uba City Unified School District and some of the Sutter County schools go through a, how many weeks is great? It's like a six-week presentation, where they're very, they go, one of our gang officers, our officers who's trained in gang resistance, goes out and talks about alternative plans and how to get away from the gang lifestyles. So we try to do everybody in Uba City before the sixth grade. Volunteer Citizens Academies, that's very, that's how we get our volunteers, that's how we can get our force to get more people without actually hurting the budget. We've got all these volunteers out in the community that want to help with the police department. We definitely want them to help. We just got to make a good match with the department. And then Walton Annexation, we continue to look at that. Last slide here, below similar cities' crime rates in California, below the national average of cities, 50,000 to 99,000, less than half the crime rate of 20 years ago. Our Gang Task Force and Net Five Presence and Regional Crime Fighting Alliance, we're not the only agency that's short-staffed, it's everybody in the region also, so there are less people in the Gang Task Force than we have had in the past, but through a joint effort, we're able to use that as a force multiplier. Crime rate is trending up statewide trend, but we're more focused in order to keep this a safe community through regional alliances and through education and the opportunity to go out and talk to other agencies. The last thing that we've done is we've assigned all of our officers, all of our leadership staff, to go out to two different agencies in the state of California and bring back ideas. So each person is going out, whether it's recruiting, whether it's training, whether it's field training, whether it's, everybody got to pick two things and bring them back, and we're going to discuss that at our next sergeants' meeting to see how we can bring back ideas here at the police department. And that's it. With that, I open it up for any questions.
Chief, thank you very much, and we'll open this to questions from the council. To the mayor. Go ahead.
Chief, I have a couple of questions. The traffic portion, under the training for bicycles, do we have any, or is there any type of classes available for the adult or the vagrants that continually cross the roads and drive erratically?
I think the best avenue that we have for the education for them is actually citations at this point in time, because a lot of them don't have a place for us to locate them.
All right, and then...
Something we can explore.
One other question, on the drug bust that, where you collected all the weapons and money and so on, what happens to the money in a case like that?
Hopefully, nobody claims it, and that probably is going to be the case. Nobody has at this point in time, and then it goes into asset forfeiture. So we take that between the Net Five agencies and the, we split it up in a pre-designated split of how the money goes, and it comes back to the department to use ultimately for things to help continue to fight crime, gangs, and stuff like that. And just so you know, that money, I don't know if everybody does this, but the $130,000 that found in that case was found in his car. He just left it out, but he had no... He just left it out, but he had an alarm.
Hmm. Wow.
Thank you. Take you first.
That's it.
Any other questions?
To the mayor, I don't have any questions. Chief, I just want to say thank you, uh, to yourself and all the police officers, uh, that protect all of us and, you know, put their line on the life on a daily basis. I know, and ride along with yourselves on the national night out. I think practically all of the citizens that we visited were all very, very thankful. So from all of us here at the council, I just want to say thank you. And if you can relay that back to the rest of the troops that we thank you and thank everything that you guys do each and every day.
Thank you and thank you for your support.
Chief, um, to the mayor, thank you. Um, thank you for the efforts you're doing for the honey oil, uh, direction and the limiting of the butane. Um, and I hope that the citizens will, uh, encourage, um, the sheriff's department to, um, I know they're short-staffed like anybody else and, but it is getting, uh, more prevalent in our community. Um, other communities are adopting ordinances and things to limit them, so they're going to come to us. And before we have, um, disasters that they have had in Reading, Red Bluff, Anderson, Oroville, um, I would really like us to be able to get that taken care of in an avenue to, uh, to make sure that that is less likely to happen. So thank you for your efforts and let the sheriff know, people, uh, to get on board, please.
Thank you.
Sorry it's so pointed, but, um, needs to be done.
Thank you.
My last comment, you, um, I've, I've said this before, thank you so much for everything that you and your department do. Um, you know, being an early morning riser, I hear those sirens out there and I've been through those yellow tapes a few times, um, but I know that I'm well-protected when I'm out there along with the children that are in the neighborhood. So just the greatest amount of gratitude that I have for you, the entire department that just bends over backward, puts your own life on, on, on hold basically when you walk out those front doors. So truly, truly appreciate everything that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And chief, thank you for leading a highly professional organization, uh, one that is well-respected, uh, not only nationally, but, uh, within the state of California and is an agency that is based on the community involvement. Uh, if citizens are afraid to reach out to the police department, not much gets done. Thank you for keeping those doors open. Uh, the leadership staff at Yuba City compares to none, um, and, and certainly, uh, the officers that are out on the street that are that interface with the public are oftentimes the first, uh, contact, uh, within the city for, for many citizens. Um, and, and we thank you, uh, for continuing your efforts, uh, to engage the public in every step along the way. So thank you.
On behalf of the men and women of Yuba City Police Department, thank you for your support.
We're going to be moving on to, uh, our public hearing. This is a fifth street bridge replacement project, resolution of necessity, initiation of eminent domain proceedings for property acquisition. Please, members of the public, don't be scared by this. Uh, there'll be a short explanation by Diana Langley, our Public Works Director.
Good evening. Um, this property is located in Marysville and if you recall, staff brought before you a couple of months ago, a cooperative agreement. Since the city of Yuba City is the lead agency on the fifth street bridge project, the city of Yuba City and the city of Marysville executed a cooperative agreement for the city to be the lead on the property acquisition. Um, city made offer to these property owners, so it's property held by Gacy and Ferris in June. And, you know, negotiations are proceeding along. This is just, uh, basically an insurance policy. If for some reason the negotiations do not continue smoothly, this is necessary to keep the project on track for July 2017 start construction date. And so we anticipate that we'll continue to, um, have, you know, effective negotiations, but as I said, this is something that we need to do to keep the process moving forward in case we do hit a snag. So the item before you tonight is a public hearing and then make the four findings noted in the staff report and then adopt the notice of intent.
Thank you. Any questions of Diana before I open this to the public? Seeing none, open this for public hearing. It's now open. Any member of the public that wishes to speak on this item may do so by going up to the podium, just letting us know who you are. Seeing no mad rush during this public hearing, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for action.
To the mayor.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion for staff's recommendation, item number two for one, two, three and four.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. We're moving forward with that project. Uh, just as we start bringing up the next group, just so you know that we're trying to keep the fifth street bridge project moving forward on a timely basis, uh, and that's a complete replacement project, uh, for the fifth street bridge. Item number three is the proposed 2015-16 consolidated annual performance and evaluation report, or the, uh, CAFR for the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG. Arnaldo Rodriguez, our Development Services Director. Arnaldo.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Arnaldo Rodriguez, Development Services Department. Before I dive into this report, there's one person I, I'd like to acknowledge publicly. We have a new city employee, probably Monday. She's our new housing analyst here at the city of Yuba City. She's been here for about three and a half months. And to Mrs. Monday, her, her background's in accounting, which really goes, uh, perfect come with the accounting job or come with the housing analyst job considering that it has so much accounting. Prior to her arriving here at the city of Yuba City, uh, she held, uh, a couple of different positions, all in accounting, um, here locally, and she's extremely enthusiastic and, uh, we feel extremely fortunate that she joined our team.
Welcome.
So this item before you, the council may recall for the benefit of the community. Um, the city of Yuba City receives approximately $585,000 dollars a year from the federal government, um, and that comes in the way of a community block development grant. The city of Yuba City, we, we are an entitlement city, so on an annual basis, we do receive those funds. As part of us receiving those funds, every year around May, we have to come before the council and we have a public notification process where we, uh, highlight what programs we're going to be, um, spending those dollars on. And then every year around September, we actually come back to the city council and we inform the city council through public process what we spent the prior years' dollars to, or, um, exactly what we allocated those dollars to. So the, the goal of the CDBG program could just for the benefit of those in the audience, uh, is to provide funding to expand economic opportunities and to provide decent housing and suitable living environments for low and moderate income persons. So just to, uh, to recap, between July 1st, uh, 2015 and June 30th, 2016, the city of Yuba City received roughly $566,000. Of those dollars, uh, uh, approximately 10 seniors received services through the city's senior handyman program, uh, roughly 69, uh, individuals received services from the freed program, 57 individuals received assistance from Salvation Army and, uh, over 2,200 individuals, um, experienced or, uh, received assistance from the, um, from the, uh, Hand of Ministry Program. Moreover, um, 936 people received assistance from Hands of Hope, 46 persons experiencing temporary, uh, homeless needs, uh, received assistance through Bridges of Housing, over 1,400 individuals were assisted through Saint, um, Vincent, uh, DePaul Emergency Food Program and roughly 150 additional folks were, were, uh, were assisted through the, through the homeless program. There is one modification or just correction that I'd like to make on page eight of the caper. There is a note on there in terms of how much dollars, uh, the city actually used during the 2015-2016 year. Uh, we did some additional calculations and we actually expended $479,000 and the original report that went out simply showed the exact dollar amount that we spent for the fiscal year. However, uh, in the report, we neglected to add the actual dollars that were carried over that happened to be spent in the year. So, so it, it was a slight error, but the, um, but the rule number is 479 to again to include the actual dollars that were expended for the program year, but then also additional dollars that had been carried over, which were also spent in the same fiscal year. So in terms of how the money was actually spent of the $479,000, 15% was expended through public services, through a lot of the programs that we identified earlier. Um, the 15% itself is a cap from HUD, so the most we can actually spend on public services is 15% and the city did spend 15% on that. And then all, and then besides that, other housing programs, public facility improvements, we spent close to $297,000 and then planning and administration of the program was $98,000 for, for the fiscal year. Um, so with that being said, uh, and what are the goals and also HUD mandates that the city have a public comment period for the community members to actually provide feedback to the city in terms of how those dollars were spent? This, this 15-day public comment period was between August the 21st and September the 4th and the city received no comments during this public comment period. So with that being said, um, the purpose of today's meeting is to receive public comments, which again, the city did not receive any comments, and then also to authorize city staff to submit the caper to HUD. Well, with that, that concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Any questions of Arnaldo prior to opening this to the public?
Nope.
Nope. Once again, I'll open this. This is, uh, time for the public. This is a public hearing. Any member of the public that wishes to speak to this matter, um, may do so by going over and speaking through that very same microphone that Arnaldo was speaking through. I'm not seeing another mad rush towards that.
I'd just like to ask a question.
Any other members of the public that wish to speak to this may follow down the, and just queue up past the, uh, police officers in the back. Foteen.
Mayor, council, my name is Foteen Halikas Kopriva. Um, I'd just like to ask a question in regards to the number and the amounts that's spent on the different agencies that we have listed up here. The folks that are within Hands of Hope, the outreach, the ministries and all the different things that we do, are we serving the same folks in all of those? So for example, and I kind of think the answer is probably yes, but is there a way to figure that out, to figure out what we're doing per person in our community for those folks?
Mayor, and members of the council, and I think Foteen is absolutely correct. I think in a lot of cases, we are serving the same people. Um, however, it's some of the programs probably don't capture the names of individuals or more than likely they're repeat customers. Um, and a lot of that simply for accounting purposes, or there's a lot of folks that are probably reluctant to give their names, I would imagine, but we do not require that our sub recipients provide, um, information in terms of the exact people or, or in terms of their names or social security numbers or anything like that.
Thank you very much for the explanation. Any other members of the public wish to speak on this?
Mr. Mayor, just to provide one further item of clarification and a follow-up to that, I think it's a very fair question and the issue is actually raised by housing in urban development during a recent audit and they have a desire to see us consolidate funding, whereas we provide, uh, 80 some odd thousand dollars to 10 different agencies.
Correct.
So your average agency is getting about $8,000. Uh, their desire is to see us dedicated to a few agencies who can concentrate and consolidate services for that, uh, get a better efficiency of use of money. I know the council's familiar with this. I think it's beneficial for the public to know as well, and that's something that we will see during the next funding round in the spring of 2016 that ultimately will be brought before, 17, thank you, uh, brought before the council for consideration.
Thank you very much for that explanation. And I know that in speaking with the HUD secretary, um, by phone, um, that, that the goal of HUD is to provide, uh, services through more direct terms and also the, the means of which, um, need to be done through, um, more consolidated efforts so we don't have duplication of, of service. Um, and, and I think that that's a, a direction that they're going to be enforcing, um, as we move forward with this. Any other members of the public wish to speak to this? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing, bring it back to council for direction.
To the mayor. Like to move for approval of this item?
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? abstained? Moving on to item number four, urban level protection, or the ULOP Senate Bill Five. Once again, Arnaldo Rodriguez, our Development Services Director will be taking us to this item.
Thank you, Mayor. The item before you is a compo, uh, is a compilation of six interrelated bills passed by the state of California. They're commonly referred to as ULOP, um, and then also Senate Bill Number Five. The Senate bills themselves are actually Senate Bills Five, Seventeen, and then, uh, four different assembly bills, Five, Seventy, One Sixty Two, One One Fifty Six. Collectively, the, those are often referred to as Senate Bill Number Five. What Senate Bill, uh, Five required was that all communities in the San Joaquin and the Sacramento Valley prepare plans for flood protection. Um, so again, and this actually applies not only to the city of Yuba City, but it applies to all cities within the San Joaquin Valley and the Sacramento Valley, which collectively I think make up about 14 counties if I counted correctly. So overall, the purposes of, of the ULOP plan is to reduce, uh, flood exposure through the city's land use planning and zoning authority. Um, so in terms of how this applies to us, this actually does require that the city of Yuba City amend its general plan that would regulate urban development in 100 and 200-year flood planes for properties that have the potential to flood to depths greater than three feet. If it does not flood to depths greater than the three feet, then the ULOP findings, which we'll, uh, talk a little further, um, do not apply. So again, this, uh, plan itself, um, is proposing to regulate specific types of developments that can take place and also outlines the conditions that would have to be met in order for development to continue. So the actual definition of ULOP, um, again, it's to, um, it's defined as a level of protection that is, that is necessary to withstand flooding that has a one and 200-year chance of occurring in any given year using criteria consistent with or developed by the California Department of Water Resources, which is responsible for, for flooding in the state. So in terms of impacts to Yuba City and how this affects us, this does mandate that we amend our general plan. And for the people in the audience, uh, in this evening, what the general plan is, it's a long-term vision that every city and every county in the state of California have. Our, our general plan was adopted in 1994 and what it does, it simply outlines the vision. It's more of a blueprint. It doesn't fully describe the timing of development, however, it does describe what the ultimate development is going to look like in the city of Yuba City. It also requires that we amend our zoning code. We also prepare an environmental assessment and the plan itself actually applies citywide. However, although it technically does apply to citywide, the vast majority of the city of Yuba City is actually outside of, of the flood zone and I'll actually show you a map here. So although again, it applies citywide, the actual true application of it, it's a relatively small area, which I'll point to. So the, the red line is the city sphere of influence. The dash line is existing city limit lines, which is about 14 or 15 square miles. The rest of the area, which is largely in the southwest quadrant of our community, uh, there's a very small corner, which I'm pointing to right there and along the Gilzeizer Slough that this would actually apply to. So again, although it's citywide, the actual parts that it truly does impact would potentially be again, the southwest quadrant of the community and along the Gilzeizer Slough. This map itself, it's, uh, it, it's highlighting what areas would be anticipated to flood should there be a breach along the Feather River, whereas this map shows what areas could potentially flood, uh, in the event of the Sutter bypass breaching, uh, in the 200-year flood, uh, plane. And then also, if you can tell that the area itself is slightly smaller, so the impacted area would be smaller should the Sutter bypass river actually breach. So in terms of what kind of projects this applies to, um, so it largely applies to any type of discretionary permit. So, uh, largely any use permit, any subdivision map. So for, um, hypothetically for a property owner were to come into the city and say, I have 10 acres and I would like to subdivide that and I'd like to build 100 homes on my 10 acres, we would have to make the ULOP findings again if it happens to be in one of the highlighted areas, which again, the, the vast majority of the city does not fall within that area. Um, if, if someone were to come in and they have a lot and they wanted to build a single family. family home and they're within one of those designated areas, we would also have to make the ULOP findings. And then also if we ever into, into a development agreement and what a development agreement is, it's basically an agreement between the city and a private developer that outlines a long-term vision for their properties. Those are usually for very large projects. For example, a brand new shopping mall would be an excellent candidate for development agreement. So in terms of the enormous packet that the city council received and that was placed on our website, in terms of the plan amendment, we are proposing modifications to chapter three of our general plan, um, which simply outlines that the city has to update or review the map every year to make sure that we're consistent with the latest information. Chapter eight would mandate that the city coordinate with Sutter County to make sure that we're all using the same information and also, uh, some additional modifications to chapter nine, including the maps that I just showed. In terms of the zoning code update, we are, we have added some language that again, that outlines when the ULOP findings have to be made and what those ULOP findings actually are. So with that being said, city staff and the planning commission are recommending to the city council approval of the negative declaration and the general plan sixteen dash O three to amend the city's general plan. We'd also like to introduce and waive the first reading of the amendments to the Yuba City Municipal Code, which would be returned back to, uh, at, at the council's next meeting on September the twenty twentieth, um, for formal, uh, action. That concludes staff's presentation.
Any questions, uh, from council of Mr. Rodriguez?
Mr. Mayor, I just would like for Mr. Rodriguez to provide one clarification. Would you please go back to the map, uh, that shows the flood areas? Realizing that some areas that are affected by the blue, which is the inundation of water, let's just pick that area, some areas can be padded up and therefore are still developable. Would you explain if any of those areas apply to that blue area and what areas may not be developable within that?
There are a couple of, um, points. So hypothetically, this lighter blue area, which is a relatively small area, relatively speaking to the city as a whole, it's expected to flood between five and ten feet and the city manager Craigor stated, that does not indicate that you cannot develop there. It simply means that if you were to, that if you were to develop there, more than likely you, you'd have to build the pad for the home up where you probably have to basically build a large irrigation base or, 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 or some kind of temporary, um, ponding basin, um, in, in that area. Is it challenging? Absolutely. Um, it could potentially be cost effective, um, but those are items as, as a city grows to the south and to the west, as, as different property owners are coming into the city, those are different things that we'll have to take a look at and, and really at that point, it's largely going to be a partnership between the city, Subufka, uh, Sutter County and the developer to make sure that we're coming up with a plan that meets all of the different ULOP findings. So again, impossible, absolutely not. Could it pose some challenges? More than likely it will. Um, however, I think a lot of people are very well aware of that. And then also if you take a look at the, 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 uh, the Gilzeizer Slough, which is just south of the city of Yuba City, the highlighted area is the city, is the portion that the city is currently contemplating, um, potentially expanding the sphere of influence and we're in the process of preparing an environmental impact report, the, 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 the project proponents are very well aware of that and they're actually working very closely with the city, um, and our EIR consultant to identify alternatives to make sure that the ULOP findings can be made.
So Arnaldo, with, uh, the Gilzeizer Slough, Slough, um, area, uh, is there a way to enclose that in the future and then through pumping sources and everything else, uh, meet a two hundred year flood protection level, uh, for that area?
I'm going to defer that to our public works director, um, Dan Langley, who's probably, uh, who can ban it, who can better answer that.
It would be very cost prohibitive, prohibitive to try to enclose Gilzeizer Sloughs, particularly down in that section where it's a wide open channel. The proponent for the, the proposed fear expansion is actually talking about building large detention basins and then using that soil to build up the adjacent pads to build up out of the flood plain.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions of staff before I open this to the public? Seeing none of y'all stepping forward, we're going to leave this to the public, open this to a public hearing. Any member of the, from the public that wishes to speak to this item may do so by going over to the podium. It looks like Foteen is headed in that direction currently. She passed the exit door, so that's where she's going.
Well, I'm curious. So.
Once again, uh, mayor and council, question in regards to this, Arnaldo. We saw the slide with the Sutter butts, or the Sutter Bypass and the Feather River levy or the breach. What happens if they both go at the same time? No, I mean, it's something to think about, right? So.
It appears the answer is going to be being provided by Diana Langley.
What really controls the elevation of the water surface is the height of the levee downstream. So if you had a breach at both locations, basically the water's going to fill up, this val, this area would fill up kind of like a bathtub until the water surface elevation gets to a point that it spills over the levee. One of the things that Subufka is working on is a relief cut plan that if you had that situation, you would go in and, um, cut a, a section of the levee down at the south end of the basin to allow the water to spill out over into the Sutter Bypass to then drain the area. And so i- if it were to happen that you had a breach on both locations, um, there would be a slight difference in this map, but it's not much, only because it's controlled by the height of the levee.
I think a, a good example to Diana was, uh, the nineteen ninety-seven, uh, breach into the Meridian Basin in which the, the water built up from the south north and there was a, a last minute, uh, fight by the federal government to help place a, a levee around the small town of Meridian. Um, as it took probably a, uh, five to six days for the water to even reach the outskirts of, of Meridian. Um, but that, that was a much smaller area, uh, and the water flows were fairly high at that time. In fact, they were at record levels, um, at that time. Any other members from the public wish to speak to this? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for action.
To the mayor, I'll go ahead and make a recommendation to approve, uh, A, B, C, and D.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much and you, as running with the theme, uh, we'll move on to item number five, Yuba City Draft Resource Efficiency Plan presented by Arnaldo Rodriguez. His job hasn't changed. He's still the development services director.
Thank you, Mayor. The item before you, item number five on your agenda is a resource efficiency plan. This is a document that very similar to the previous plan is, uh, evolved at, out of Sacramento and it's being required by the state of California. So one of the things that the state of California did dating back to two thousand and five is the city or can the state had adopted numerous greenhouse reduction plans and so for greenhouse, uh, gas reduction plans and they were largely adopted by executive orders and assembly bills. The, the very such, the very first, uh, order was again, two thousand and five by then Governor Arnold Schwarzenegger, where he adopted Executive Order S dash, uh, three dash O five. And what this called for, he's, he simply, uh, required that by twenty-ten, California shall reduce its greenhouse gas emissions, uh, to two thousand and, uh, to two thousand levels and by twenty-fifty, they would be eighty percent below nineteen ninety levels. Uh, then shortly after Governor Brown, knowing that we had missed the year twenty-thirty, he actually added one more layer and said by twenty-thirty, there shall be, uh, eighty percent of nineteen ninety levels. And actually I think that's a typo. If I recall, that should be, um, eighty percent by, by two thousand levels, if I recall correctly. That's a typo. I apologize for that. And, uh, on top of that, later on, an assembly bill came on and, and it actually mandated that the California Air Resources Board be the responsible party to make sure that all the different, uh, cities and all the different counties in the state of California has something on the books to actually address greenhouse gas reductions. When this was first enacted in terms of, in terms of the executive order, but, um, I wouldn't call it confusion, but it wasn't clear in terms of what, what state agency was responsible for overseeing the program. And again, that program is the, uh, the California Air Resources Board. With that being said though, cities such as Yuba City, we are not mandated by state law to actually approve a resource efficiency plan. However, there are, uh, a couple of enormous benefits, uh, if, if we do adopt one. One of the key things being is that we can take advantage of California Environmental Quality Act streamlining. And if you're a developer, the, and that's a, uh, somewhat of a catchphrase, but it's a very important one because at the end of the day, uh, whatever benefits that you can reap from SEQA streamlining are enormous to move projects along and to have projects approved by a local agency. If however, the CLX not to adopt the plan, that's always an option. One of the things that it could potentially happen is when projects come along that are subject to SEQA analysis or the SEQA guidelines, every project would actually have to conduct or prepare some form of greenhouse gas emissions plan. Um, so with that in mind, one of the things that the city did is we partnered with Atkins Consulting out of Sacramento and we came up with a plan which we believe is extremely flexible, provides a large menu of options for developers, um, to make sure that, that we can help save time and money for, for the development of our community. Um, in terms of the actual plan itself, and if anyone hasn't read it, it's only three hundred and fifty pages, I believe in total. Um, it's, it's, it's good evening time reading, uh, just in case you're bored. Um, and a couple of things that I do want to highlight is that there is a menu of community measures that we do identify and there's also municipal measures. Municipal measures are actions that the city would take on, whereas community measures are actions that the city can help encourage that the public, uh, do in order to help us meet our, our goals. Um, the key thing here, I think, and I really want to emphasize this, the community measures again are a menu of options. They're extremely flexible. If a developer were to come into our city, what we would do is we have a long checklist. We would go through the checklist, we would check off and they would gain points for the items that they would provide. However, if a developer came and said, uh, there's a, um, they're a brand new technology. I really want to do this. It's not on your, on your menu. We obviously have the luxury and we have the flexibility to actually take a look at it and as long as it, it meets the guidelines, then that's perfectly okay. So again, our plan is not set in stone. It's intended to really be treated as a living document. It's intended to provide options and flexibility for development and that's really the key, I think. Um, so again, that's the third bullet point. Um, so a couple of examples of programs that, that this plan largely encourages, um, we encourage a lot of residents to use training in partnership with PGE, with other state agencies, uh, really promoting energy efficiency programs. Um, for example, the, uh, the, the toilet rebate program is a very good example of one of those programs. Again, really partnering with PGE to create, uh, various programs, encouraging energy audits, which we currently have one here at the city where we have the equipment for a HERS radar. Um, so if you are a HERS radar, we, we have the equipment, uh, we have the equipment here at City Hall that people can actually borrow, uh, free of charge. It's extremely, uh, costly, um, equipment, however, that is available to the public and again, it's free of charge. Um, also promoting tree planting programs and those different types of programs, uh, to encourage greenhouse gas reduction. That was a, a fairly quick meaning to a fairly dense document. Um, but with that being said, we would recommend that the council adopt a mitigated negative declaration and the general plan amendment sixteen dash O four, which again, would adopt resource efficiency plan as appendix B to the city's general plan. Thank you.
Before I open this public, any questions from council?
Just one quick one. So Arnaldo, you are recommending that this document be provided, um, as a insomnia, uh, sleep aid, is that correct?
That is.
You know, I, I know how, how difficult it is reading some of these sometimes because of the repetitiveness, but there's a lot of, uh, excellent information, uh, and actually educational information in there that, uh, can be quite interesting, um, to anybody that wants to environmentally savvy or understand. So, uh, while some of it can be very dry and boring, there's a lot in there that is, uh, very good. Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions of Mr. Rodriguez? I'm going to open this to the public. Any member of the public wishing to speak to this item may do so by stepping so ever gently over to the podium to speak. Foteen, I'm going to miss the.
I want to see more production and more, more business.
Were no other member of the, of the public wishing to speak to this? I see some movement. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to council for action.
To the mayor, I'll make a staff's recommendation to approve A, B, and C.
Second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Clean sweep tonight there, Mr. Rodriguez. Public communication, you're welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on items listed on the agenda when they're called. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard under item number seven, which is the appearance of interested citizens. Comments on controversial items may be limited in large groups or encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. Written requests. Madam Clerk, do we have any written requests?
No requests were received.
I will move to item number seven, appearance of interested citizens. Members of the public may address the city council on items of interest that are within the city's jurisdiction. Individuals addressing general comments are encouraged to limit, are encouraged to limit their statements to three minutes and we'll remind you when those three minutes get there. Any members wishing to speak? Still no one moving. Moving on to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine, could be enacted in one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the city council, staff, or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. I'm done with that.
To the mayor, um, while I was just browsing through this, um, did find, um, a mistake that I don't think should be on there. On the roll call for August ninth, uh, it has, uh, present council member Cleveland Didball and Mayor Buckland, and then it says absent Dukes and Didball. So, uh, it was actually Dukes and Gil that were not present, so just happened to accidentally catch that as I was just browsing.
Well, thank you very much. We'll make sure that, uh, that's reflected in these minutes of today.
Thank you.
The public is now aware of errors that we make.
They're little ones, but they're there.
Move to approve the consent calendar with the changes. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. We'll be moving on to general items. Item number ten, the twenty fifteen Homeland Security Grant Program presented by, uh-huh, B. Commander Tom Tappy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of our public. Uh, this is a, um, recurring grant. This is the twenty fifteen Homeland Security Grant. The police department, uh, has the potential to be awarded twenty-one thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars. Uh, it's a non-matched matching grant. Uh, we've used this money, uh, for the past couple of years to replace the, uh, radio systems in our undercover patrol cars. Uh, this should be the last, um, batch. This money will be used for another four cars and that should do it. Uh, these radios are antiquated and in fact, uh, uh, they don't even make the portables as I understand it. Motorola does not make the portables anymore, uh, which is the basis for the, uh, car radios. So that would be replaced by a, uh, dedicated, um, mobile radio, much like what we have in our patrol cars. Um, and it's obviously going to enhance our communications abilities, uh, as well as interoperability, which is, um, a, a key, uh, uh, for this grant. So what we're asking for, or what we intend to do with the money is, uh, to spend approximately seventeen thousand four hundred and forty dollars towards the purchase of the four mobile radios and then another twenty-two hundred and sixty dollars to install those radios. And then what we'd like to do is spend the remainder approximately eighteen hundred and sixty-three dollars towards buying replacement batteries for, uh, our existing portable radios. With that, uh, I'm asking you to make a, make, uh, make a motion to accept the award of the twenty fifteen Homeland Security Grant in the amount of twenty-one thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars. Approve supplemental budget appropriations to the police department's revenue account, uh, one hundred dash four-three-four-two-zero in the amount of twenty-one thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars and approve the supplemental budget appropriations to the police department's expenditure account, number twenty-one-nine-three-dash-six-nine-two-oh-one in the amount of twenty-one thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars. And with that, I could take any questions that you may have.
Any questions of Commander Tapping?
Nope.
Action from the council?
Move to approve staff's recommendation.
Move to approve staff's recommendation for A, B, C, and D.
Second that.
We have a motion and multiple seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good talking. I'll wait, that's when the radios get installed. Moving on to item number 11, Police Recruiting Incentive Program. I had to look up to make sure it was really going to be the chief this time. This will be presented by our chief of police, Mr. Rob Lanin.
Good evening, Mayor Buckland, council members. Thank you again for your time. The item you have before you is a recommendation to approve a resolution for police recruiting incentive program. I spoke earlier about our problems with retention, with, not just retention, because other agencies are paying lateral incentives, but also with recruitment. So the purpose of this is to increase the sworn staffing at the police department, a very highly competitive market, by offering incentives to encourage highly qualified lateral officers, which is an officer that is qualified to work as soon as he completes a field training program. He's already done the academy to apply with Yuba City Police Department. And a little bit of background on this. In an ABC News feature from July of 2015, the author identified that the number of applicants for police departments nationwide was down more than 90% in some major cities and, as well as some smaller urban departments. The cause was attributed to the low unemployment rate, increasingly tough standards for new officers, limited job flexibility, because most officers work shift work, as well as the tarnished image of the position in the eye of the potential recruit, and I emphasize in the eye of the potential recruit. Record low unemployment has made it harder for most industries to fill vacancies, but police recruiters have extra hurdles to overcome. Candidates must pass demanding physical and psychological tests in addition to extremely comprehensive background checks. Adding to the problem is a large number of officers taking early retirement due to concerns with the pension stability and reform. California Police Chiefs Association has identified recruitment and retention as one of the two largest issues facing them this current year. In the California Post Officers Standards website that lists job openings for police officers throughout the state, currently there are over 275 different agencies that are hiring officers. These are the hurdles we face in this very competitive field. Basically, we have three options, three opportunities to hire candidates for law enforcement. The first one is to, is the least expedient, it takes the most amount of time. Takes a year from the officer, the time we test for an officer until the time he completes his background, his psychological testing, the academy, and the field chaining program. We experienced moderate success in this in the past where we've actually sponsored recruits to the academy, and with declining success in the present. We've recently refined the process, the screening process, the amount of time that we're taking to actually between testing sites, so we have more opportunity to screen the recruits. We feel like we're going to do a better job, and we're seeing more success with our current staff of three officers in the academy. The second option is to hire an officer during or upon completion of the police academy. This is the most problematic option. Most academies are already filled by sponsored cadets, which means they're already hired by an agency, which leaves a very limited field to choose for candidates. Basically, the way that a law enforcement academies work in the state of California is almost all of them are run through junior colleges. So they run on the semester program, and they're limited in the size of officers that can go through a class based on the size of the classroom, which is basically 40 to 50 academy applicants at one time. They only run them twice a year because they run them according to the semesters again. The problem also is that you don't have to pass a background to go into an academy. So a lot of those spaces are filled by officers that are going through the academy that never have a chance because they don't have the ability to pass a background. But because it's a junior college program, they have to accept all candidates. Currently, there's only one academy north of Sacramento, or one junior college north of Sacramento that offers a police academy, further limiting the amount of applicants that we're seeing on a yearly basis, and that's Buick College. With any amount of luck, Yuba College will again be doing that in the very near future, and we're hoping for a January start date, but that's still out, you know, out, out of our hands. The third option is a lateral candidate. Hire officers that currently work for other agencies and have already successfully completed a probationary period with another department. Basically, all they have to do is pass a background psychological test, they've already got the experience, we know they're a proven commodity, and they just have to do a shortened version of our field training program. That's the fastest option that we have. Our ruling can follow from the 2016 annual report, lists 26 lateral officers on our staff. Almost 50% of our staff are hired from lateral, our lateral officers hired from other agencies. The majority come from Marysville Police Department, Yuba County, and Sutter County Sheriff's Department. With the new penalties associated with pensions, lateral candidates revert to the new classic formula, sometimes leaving a three at 50 formula coming to the Yuba City Police Department at a three at 55, which basically means that you have to work five additional years before you can reach your retirement. When one hires from one agency to another, we feel this option will be just decreasing absentee incentive program. The other agencies throughout the state of California are offering lateral incentives right now. In fact, this magazine that I have here, which is kind of like our trade magazine, Police Officers Poor Act Law Enforcement, I don't remember what it stands for, but it offers jobs in the back. And if you look at the jobs in the back, there are agencies that are hiring right now, and you look at what they're offering for lateral incentives, Chico kind of beat us to the punch this time because they offered a $10,000 incentive, and they just put it out there. There's agencies that are paying $20,000, Salinas Police Department, to bring a lateral over, and there's also agencies that are paying 10% of the annual salary. So we are by far not the only one doing this in the state. We're offering this up. So what we're competing with when we're looking at lateral officers is pay for one thing. Out of a recent Sacramento Bee article, they listed all the pay, annual pay, regular plus overtime in the surrounding agencies, which are what we're competing with. We can live in Yuba City and work in Sacramento, we can work in, or we can live in Yuba City, we can work in Rockland or Roseville or any other agency. El Grove pays up to $115,000. Other agencies are in 110, 112, and that's our average salary. So we're kind of at the bottom of that, but we offer a better quality of life here, a cheaper quality of life, more urban types or rural type setting. So what we, what we are trying to do is offer some type of an incentive. Lateral incentives are currently in place in numerous agencies, like I spoke about. The bonuses vary throughout the state. Some incentives as low as $400 in Roseville, to as high as 10% of the annual pay or $20,000. The proposed program for the city of Yuba City will provide a referral incentive of $2,500 for lateral police officers. So an officer or somebody that refers a lateral officer to come to this department would get a $2,500 incentive. $1,250 after they finish the hiring incentive or hiring completion, $1,250 upon their completion of their one-year probation. The lateral officer that's hired would be the same type of thing. It'd be $2,500, $1,250 upon initial hiring process, $1,250 upon completion of probation. And in addition to that, we would give them a, an accrual of 40 sick leave hours to start their bank with. In talking to a lot of the laterals that we currently have at the department, a lot of them are coming over here, and they don't, they're giving up their sick leave banks. They're coming here with absolutely no sick leave on the books, which means in order for them to take sick leave, they have to pay out of their own pocket, and they're losing money. They can't take a day off without getting paid for it. So the fiscal impact of this is there are no additional costs associated with the implementation of the proposed ordinance. The proposed incentive will be funded by salary savings out of the general fund from existing vacancies within the police department. There'll be no other, no other impact to the city's general fund. The maximum cash incentive is paid would be $5,000 for a lateral officer, 2,500 for the officer, 2,500 for the referring person. We have limitations that are listed in here that says who can be a referring person. Obviously, we exclude certain personnel to make sure there's no conflicts there. The maximum cost would also, oh, the other thing would be, we would pay for the initial uniform allotment of up to $750. A lot of these departments, officers coming from other departments are having to change from black to a blue uniform, or gray to black, whatever it happens to be, but it does cost them a lot of money to start at another department, so we figured we'd pay $750 as another incentive for that. The maximum cost for hiring 10 laterals would be $50,000 for incentives, that's $5,000 for 10 officers, and 7,500 for uniforms, 750 times 10. The alternative is do not adopt the resolution to provide staff with direction to amend the recommendation, and our recommendation is for the council to adopt a resolution authorizing a police recruiting incentive program as listed above. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you very much, chief. Questions for the chief?
To the mayor.
Go ahead.
Chief, I've got a couple of questions. You mentioned, first of all, sick leave. It's accumulated, but if they leave, they come, would come here without any kind of sick leave, so they'd start at zero, but your suggestion would be to allow them to bank their sick leave or move it over? Because if they leave the agency, let's say they're in Marysville and they want to move over here, and do they not cash out the entire sick leave over there?
A lot of, like our department, we can't cash out all of it. You get 1/4 of it, and some are 15%, some are 20%. It's all different. But what we're saying is, we're giving them 40 hours of sick leave and putting that on the books for them, not what they left at from the other department.
Okay. And then the other thing we had was $2,500 per the person's referring it, $2,500 for the employee coming over here. Is it a cap on per person if I refer three people over here, so I can earn up to $15,000? Or is it just, I only get 5, $2,500 bucks for each only one time occurrence?
You could do as many times as you wanted to do it, because I think if you brought one, a lot of officers are, have the ability to recruit, they're good recruiters, and the best recruiters we have are the officers that have been here for a while from another agency that are selling our program back to them, which is why we have so many Yuba County officers here, because we had a couple of good recruiters. Yes, you can, you can cap it. We have a shortage of about eight people right now, so we would cap it at eight approximately till we fill our staff.
Yeah. Now, the other question I had is, and you've nailed it, is we've got eight vacancies, even if we gave out $5,000, that's $40,000 in incentives, and I think in the long run, yeah, I mean, it looks like it's a lot of money in the short run, but in the long run, that's a pretty cheap referral fee, because in the private sector, even though we have recruiters that we pay 25% of the annual salary to bring in a qualified candidate, and I think for the amount of vacancies we have, and you mentioned 50% of the laterals that are coming across are 50% are from other agencies, so even if we get four of them, at $20,000, if history would repeat itself, that's a small drop in the bucket to bring in some good quality law enforcement from other agencies. So definitely something I would support.
Any other questions, comments for the chief?
I have, I have a couple of things. I, I agree with the incentive. I think it's a great way to bring in good quality officers, you know, word of mouth, it's the best advertisement, I believe. But along with that, once we have the officers, I think we also should look at how do we keep the officers here, because we don't want to lose them to another agency. And so I think we want to stay proactive and ensure that we're keeping our officers once we get them here too. So just something, you know, food for thought, just for the future. And also, as far as the recruitment for those vacancies, a couple of years ago, we had actually talked about different ways that we can actually change up our recruitment style, and with corrections, with Department of Corrections, I actually did the recruitment for correctional officers. One of the things that was very, very successful for me, and it wasn't done before, but it became to be a huge success with the entire department in recruiting correctional officers to get into the academy was what we called mass recruitment. And so we actually set up a particular day where we get applicants to come in, and it's the one-stop shop where we have scanners available, they do the written test, scanned right there on the spot. If they pass their written test, move them right into a physical abilities test, right from the physical abilities test. If they pass that, then they go ahead and they're scheduled for that psych test later on in the day. And we're told during the exam process to make sure you bring your gym clothes or dress in your gym clothes, have your snack or sandwich or whatever in case you have a break in there so that you're ready for your psychological, but also do the fingerprinting, package it all up, and then they're all ready for background. And it's that one-stop, it can actually shorten your one-year process of getting applicants through and get them ready to go into the academy. The difference with our Correctional Officer Academy was that they had to pass backgrounds before they went into the academy. So that's something that we may want to talk about just in general, is that shall we change and look at post to see if we can go ahead and change that process and make sure that they do clear backgrounds before they get into the academy? Because once they get out of the academy, we can get them on work. Something to think about, you know, instead of doing the status quo, if we can change some of our recruitment style. But that's basically some of the comments that I had. I think it's, the incentive program's always a positive, though.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, is doing the mass recruiting. We're trying to streamline the process. And maybe I misspoke earlier, but when we send somebody to the academy, they do have the background, they do have the psychological, and that's part of the waiting time. But nobody that we send to this department has not completed both of those in all aspects of hiring.
Perfect. Right.
Any other questions of the chief? Chief, just a couple of things on this. Thank you for bringing forward an incentive program that I think, the base to this program is, is well thought out, and, and I just have a couple of things, and certainly before, I might allow the public to speak on this, should they desire, but a couple of things that I, that I really want to emphasize is, what's the dollar cost for Yuba City sending an officer to the academy, just in general terms?
I may have to get back to you on that, but if I was to speak, if the academy's four months, we have been sponsoring them through the, through rent, utilities, salary, and tuition, and we're partially reimbursed for some per diem and tuition through the state. Do you have a... Yeah, so approximately $60,000 with salary.
Sixty thousand dollars. And what is a, just a dropout rate that we experience from the academy?
From start to finish, back in 2006, 2007, 2008, we had a very high rate, we probably, of a success rate, we were probably almost 75, 85, 90%. Recently, it's below 50%. We experienced an issue with the last academy class where two of them dropped out, but we may be able to pick those two back, and it's a personnel-type thing, there was an issue that they had. I would say it's below 50% definitely right now, and I think part of that we attribute to the screening process. We're trying to refine that now. We want local people that have an investment in our community. We want, and that's part of the questions we're asking them now, is why do you want to come to Yuba City? We don't want to be a springboard for them to go somewhere else as a lateral to another agency and get that $20,000. So to answer your question, I don't have those figures, I can get them, but do you remember the success rate?
This isn't to put anybody on the spot. This is more in the, in the general context of, of trying to understand, and for the public to understand the complexity of police recruitment. Chief, in, in training, once they, once they exit the academy and they come to the police department, how many, give us an idea with the, with the training costs, and again, in more general terms of dollars?
So our field training program is four months, so you're investing four months of salary to go through the field training program, and if the average officer makes about, just round it off to $6,000, so you're, that's another $25,000. But on top of that, you're also paying a field training officer overtime when this person has to write reports and stuff, so there is a cost, a kind of a hidden cost that's still, we have to use in order to train a person.
And with these individuals, it's still a toss-up whether or not the, the police department, their training, the Yuba City's training program, field training program, doesn't have a lot of flexibility in it. It is very rigid in its implementation and expectation of production from the hired officer. So we still have a dropout rate in that training program. Am I correct?
You are correct, but I can address, when you say not flexible, I would like to bring up that we, when we started to see our rate above 25%, we started looking at other agencies to see what they're doing, talking to Chico and Redding specifically, what they have is a longer period of break-in, so we have changed some of our practices to allow them to get more of an orientation process upfront. So we do, you're right, we do have a very tough...
It's a high standard, and, and it's been, it's been held that way, and, and certainly the end product bears that out on the street, is when you have someone that has made Yuba City's training program, unfortunately, they're, they're probably acceptable at about any agency in the state of California at that point. So we are a picking ground for other agencies, so I do want to make that point. When we talk about Roseville, Roseville's purse contract is, is a little different, so their recruitment program doesn't have a large incentive, because they're able to carry their, their purse contract over to Roseville, because they still run under a classic purse contract. So that's, that's one thing that we don't have here at Yuba City. The only addition that I can see making to this, chief, is in the 40-hour category of transferred sick or any leave time would be, under the caveat, that if they're coming from an agency with 40 or more hours on the books at that agency, that we would transfer that time over. If they only had 20 hours on the books, let's say at the, at the... If they only had 20 hours on the books, let's say at the, at the agency that they're coming from, that we would only start them at the 20 hour, whatever they currently had on the books, but not to exceed the, the 40 hours. So I think that that would be a fair way of, of not picking up somebody that maybe had already burned through a tremendous amount of sick leave. That, that, we do need to bring them over and give them the ability to have leave should they become ill and, and not be penalized financially. That's all I have, other than the, one of the retention programs that we have, and, and I think that, that the chief may speak to this, are the lateral opportunities interagency at Yuba City. They're fairly broad, and the chief has made sure that, that even investigations, investigators don't stay long, and they're, they're cycled through the process, giving a wide degree of opportunity, whether it be traffic, whether it be investigations, or other net five assignments and, and things like that.
Correct, we have three and five-year positions, correct.
So that does, it offers that broader range. With that, I'm going to open this to the public. Any member of the public that wishes to speak to this, this is a monetary issue within the city, and, and certainly, any member of the public that wishes to speak to this matter may do so by going up to the podium. Go ahead. All you have to do is just provide us your name when you get up there, not while you're walking.
I am Deana Walker. I just wanted to say I agree with the mayor on transferring existing benefits, you know, the sick pay or whatever. I feel that if, I don't think they should get additional. I think if they're gonna, if they already have it, just transfer it. I just, you know, it costs more money. I mean, I don't know why you would give them extra, that's, if you can answer that. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you very much.
And I don't know that we're given, Deana, I don't know if we're giving them extra or not, because what happens is when you leave another agency, you either get paid or it gets zeroed out. So you don't get to bring any over because we're different entities as far as budgeting goes.
Any other member of the public who should speak to this? If not, bring it back to council for action.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second that motion.
We have a motion and a second.
Mr. Mayor, I think we ought to clarify the issue that you brought up with respect to the sick leave. That's item number three on the resolution. If we're going to change that, we should make a note of that. But I don't know how the rest of the council feels on that item. Do you want to, you want to discuss that again, to explain it again?
We can bring it back to discussion if there is an amendment to it, or if you just want to pass it along as, as an open number on the 40 hours.
So do we have any questions regarding?
My comment is that I would support that it's equal to what they either have on the books with a cap of the 40 hours, but not pay more than what they are walking away from.
That could be the amended language.
That could be, yeah.
Include that in your, your motion.
So just from a technical matter, the applicant would need to be able to demonstrate to the city that they had it on the books. I'm just curious, if they got paid out for a portion of it, does that change the equation? Usually, as the, the chief mentioned, you will not get 100% payout, you'll get, you know, 25% payout. Maybe some old school agencies are still paying larger amounts. I guess from, from staff's perspective, probably the demonstration that they had time on the books would be sufficient. Thank you.
I think that's an agreement.
Yeah, and I'll second that amended motion.
Okay, with the amendment in place?
Aye.
Yeah. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, chief.
Almost there.
Almost. All right, on number 12 wastewater rate methodology for septic haulers. This is going to be a stimulating discussion, I'm sure. Diana?
It always is when it comes to wastewater. So with the adoption of the wastewater rates, we changed the methodology in how we charge septic haulers. Previously, they were charged based upon the gallon that they discharged at the wastewater treatment facility with a minimum of 400 gallons. With the adopted rate study, we changed it so it's based upon whatever the truck is rated for. So if it's a 2,000 gallon truck, they pay based upon 2,000 gallons. We've received some feedback from the septic haulers, because a lot of times, they're not coming to the plant with a full truck. So it might be a 2,000 gallon rated truck, but they're only coming with, you know, 1,200 gallons. So under a current rate structure, based upon the 2,000 gallons, they'd be paying $686. If you go back to the previous rate structure where they're just paying based upon the actual volume that's discharged, they would be paying $411.60. So what staff is recommending is to go back to the past practice of base, charging based upon the actual volume with a minimum of 400 gallons. The revenues that were projected in the rate study were based upon actual historical volumes and not based upon these minimum charges based upon the rating of the truck. And so what we're proposing, particularly with this proposed rate, is that the cost per gallon would stay at the 34 cents per gallon, and then a 400 gallon minimum charge of $137.28. So we're asking that you adopt a resolution to make that change.
Any questions, or Diana?
Yes, to the mayor. Diana, one of the questions that I had earlier today had to do with, it was a 218 process. How is it possible that we could actually make a change of this nature? And you're going to have to remember what we discussed, because I can't quite remember how, how it, how it came together. But it's because, if I remember right, in the study, and in the 218, it was based upon the gallonage, and that's why we were able to go back, backwards to going back to that rather than, and to go less rather than the, keeping it at the minimum rate that you were going to charge.
Correct.
If you can explain that a little better.
Right, so what was approved through the proposition 218 process is the max that the city can charge. And because we're actually proposing something less than what was approved through the max, that's how we can do it and still be complying, in compliance with the proposition 218.
Right. It is essentially what we did with the water, and, and we didn't change the sewer rate, so. All right, action from the council?
I move to approve the item.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to item number 13, establish a pension rate stabilization program and other post-employment benefits pre-funding. Robin Bertegna, Finance Director, longtime, no here for me, Robin.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council.
We changed that slide back there, we're done with that one.
Definitely has nothing to do with what I'm talking about. The concept of establishing a pension stabilization reserve trust fund was originally brought forward to city council as an introduction in March during the annual budget goal-setting workshop. This was evaluated further by city staff, and during the budget adoption process for fiscal year 1617, the council approved the set aside of $2 million from the former Economic Stabilization Reserve Fund. Those funds were set aside in a city-held trust fund on the city's books in a separate account until the staff report, resolution, policy, and administration agreement could be brought back to city council for consideration. During that time, we've looked at outside third-party irrevocable trusts that are approved by the Internal Revenue Service for funding future CalPERS retirement costs and OPEB costs. At a time where the city's contributions for CalPERS are projected to continue escalating year over year, this is an important tool which can help stabilize rates in the future. To date, the most widely adopted pension rate stabilization program for governmental agencies has been the plan sponsored by Public Agency Retirement Services, or PARs. And we have a representative here from PARs this evening, Mitch Barker. He's one of their executive vice presidents. We've been working with him to learn more about the program and gathering information from other cities that have also implemented this similar program. Their particular plan offers two components, and you can't pick one without the other. It includes both a pension rate stabilization program and an other post-employment benefits component of them, and they're both a part of their IRS Code Section 115 approved trust plans. The advantages of the public, or excuse me, the pension rate stabilization program is it gives us local control over assets. We can determine how much we want to send to CalPERS to buy down future rate increases in any given budget year. We don't just send the money to CalPERS, and if they have investment losses, we lose some of our money. We can use it as a pension rate stabilization to buy down potentially some or all of a future rate increase through CalPERS. It gives us investment flexibility. We're limited in how we can invest the city's money to where it's very, very safe and has liquidity. For this type of an investment, we don't need as much liquidity so we can enter into longer-term investments and earn a somewhat higher rate of return, but yet have the investments be secure. It would lower our net pension liability. We look at our net pension liability every year when the actuarial reports come out, and it depends upon how PERS is evaluating our market value of assets and how the stock market did in June of any given year as to what the assets are worth at that point in time when they do the valuation of them. And it has the potential to improve the city's credit rating because it shows that we're committed to setting aside assets to fund future liabilities, and we're saving money as opposed to spending it all each and every budget year. With that, I would answer any questions that you have. My recommendation tonight is that you adopt a resolution approving the adoption of the Public Agency's Post-Employment Benefits Trust administered by Public Agency Retirement Services, adopt the attached policy for the Pension Rate Stabilization Program and Other Post-Employment Benefits Pre-Funding, and authorize an initial contribution of $2 million to the component for the Pension Rate Stabilization Program.
Thank you very much. Any questions of Robin?
Through the mayor, not any questions, but just a comment. I think, like you mentioned, this was one of the priorities of the council to start tackling retirements. And obviously, you know, it's a great step, and hopefully, as the economy continues to turn in the coming years, that the, the council members and the next generations can contribute, contribute additional sums of monies and, and try to knock that unfunded liability down as low as they can. So a great start.
That was a, that was a short timer's speech right there, council member. Any other comments? Done, action from the council.
Through the mayor, I'll go ahead and make staff's recommendation to approve A, B, and C.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Another job well done, Robin.
Thank you.
Item number 14, fiscal year 201617, City Council Priorities and Goals Progress Report, presented by our city manager, Mr. Steve Krager.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. I guess to give some broad perspective to our students here tonight, your, your elected officials, before you meet once every two weeks, they set broad policy for the city. The staff members who've been coming before the council this evening to present are the ones who are responsible for executing on a daily basis. Council meets usually in March of every year, discusses goals and priorities. These are six longstanding priorities of this council. Underneath these priorities, they set forth initiatives. This is what we are driven to advance on a daily basis, ultimately under the mission of providing quality service, innovation, and leadership to the community. What I'd like to do is touch upon in the packet you have in your staff report, a very comprehensive packet of progress report, we come six months, demonstrate what we've been doing. Personal thanks to Terrell Locke for assembling the comprehensive report, and of course, to your executive team for their daily work to, to make progress. What I like to do is just touch upon a few of these areas. So last time, we touched upon some. This time, I'd like to touch upon these three that are in bold. The first being develop our economy. Improve customer service through online tools. An emphasis of your council, saying that while we have a physical front door that's available to the public from eight to five, five days a week, we need to provide a digital front door to the public so that when the contractor goes home at night after a long day at work, he or she can go out and interface with our city through an online mechanism. Currently, we have a zoning check, an open counter. This provides the front end for the business and development community to come and explore what we have to offer, assuming that they would like to do something in our community and actually pull a physical permit. Your council recently approved a contract with a company named Exela, a software package that is in the process of being implemented. And we have a target date of November, early November, for the implementation of these features, namely permit applications for development, plan review, and also business license applications. This is the beginning of our digital front door. We actually have a committee that's assembled, a cross-section across the city of Yuba City staff, and they meet on a regular basis and talk about ways that we can improve our interface with the public through technology. Also, under the, the umbrella of developing our economy as a tourism-based improvement district, essentially, as you know, the hotels and motels getting together, making the conscious decision to collect additional revenue from people who are staying in our community for the sole purpose of building the tourism base of our community. This is so important because it provides an ongoing revenue source for the folks who are involved in tourism, our hotels and motels who benefit greatly, to enhance what our community offers and bring more people to the Yuba Sutter area. Just to give perspective on that as well, that will be brought back before your council later this year as the approval process continues. In terms of maintaining and improving infrastructure, I'll touch upon the second and the third, the Water and Wastewater Rate Study, a huge step in a direction of funding and maintaining hundreds of millions of dollars of infrastructure we have for our water and wastewater systems. Your council has been very adamant in saying that this is a priority, that we prepare for the future of our community and maintain what we have. The, the rates that have been put in place will enable that. And you've also said you want to come back on a yearly basis and review that to ensure that they're appropriately set, and we will continue to do that into the future. The roadway projects and rehabilitation, your, your council recently approved the State Route 99, 2099 interchange, our first initial analysis, working with Caltrans. We've done some residential resurfacing, and in the coming meeting on the 20th, you will have the bid for the Garden Highway project that goes from Windship Road down to Lincoln. And Garden Highway will now be complete in terms of a nice thoroughfare along the eastern edge of our community. Regarding the, regarding the Bridge Street Corridor, a four-phase project, for those who have been down to the area, this is kind of a picture of before, which is not pretty. And I like to think that this is, this is very attractive. And this is what your council adopted when you adopted the plans and said, we want to put a different face on the Bridge Street Corridor. We have nice lighting, landscape median, and it just has a nice feel. And my compliments to the public work staff, as much as they have told the communities to stay away from Bridge Street, of course, I purposely drive it just to see how it's going down there, and I have never had an issue down there. They've been, done a very good job, the contractors of lane control. Going back to this slide, you'll see that the red is the Phase 1 that's going to be completed this month. Phase 2 is the actual physical bridge that will be replaced from a two-lane to a four-lane bridge, a $70 million project that is not just Yuba City, and that's important to note. Although we are the lead agency and the responsible agency, all of our, our sister agencies in the area, being Marysville, Yuba County, and Sutter County, are joined with us in that effort to advance that in early, pardon me, mid-2017. Phase 3, we've been acquiring homes along the Cooper to Gray corridor, ultimately to widen it to four lanes. And then Phase 4, in the future, will extend it all the way, although it's four lanes. Now, to 99, we hope to have the same amenities and attractiveness for the whole corridor. Really an exciting time for Yuba City. Really an exciting time for Yuba City. So finally, enhancing our image, something that's important to us, that I would even argue that this picture right now is part of that effort to enhance our image. We have an upgraded website that was released since your goal-setting meeting, and also we have really pushed the YC 311. You've seen banners throughout the community. It's going really well. I take a lot of pride and pleasure when people ask me how I get things done around here. I tell them this is part of my job. I was driving the community today, and twice I pulled over and pulled out my phone and put entries into YC 311. I don't make phone calls to staff. I put them in here because it's got measurements, it's got metrics, it tracks everything. So, it's actually easier on staff and easier on me. And so, I like to think that we have 65,000 deputies throughout our city who have the power at their fingertips to be able to help improve our community through the use of YC 311 available at the App Store and the Android Store. So, just go out and put that in, and it will download. That is a nutshell of three different areas. Of course, happy to answer any other questions that you might have. Thank you.
Any other questions of Mr. Krager?
No. No, thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right. Moving on to business from the city council. Item number 15, this will be the appointment of the interim city clerk. And on this item, I get to joyfully recuse myself from here at the dais as one of the involved parties is my spouse, and you're all gonna have to take a guess. It's not Terrell, so.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. So, I'm here before you tonight to let you know that you need to appoint an interim city clerk. I have a residency issue and have vacated the position. So, we've got two options that you can do per the government code, and one of them is to hold a special election. That is not an option for Yuba City because we do have the general election coming in between, before the special election has to be later than 114 days. And then the other option is appointment. So, there's options for appointment. You can have an application process, or you can appoint the person who has been, anybody else that you would like to appoint, or my recommendation is to appoint the person, the only person who's on the ballot to run for the city council, who will most likely be city clerk as of the election November 8.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the council members?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the individual that has filed for that position on the ballot and appoint them at this time to fill the interim term, and then presuming that they are elected in November, would take it from there.
I actually do have a couple of comments to make on this item before we move forward.
I think what we need to do is either have a motion and a second, and then we can have comments.
Let me second that motion, so we have our motion and second, so now we can.
And discussion, please.
Absolutely. So, my concern with this position is, Terrell, first of all, I hate to see you leave, but according to the resident move, I completely understand that. My concern was that this came about August 10th, and when this position was vacated as of that date and we were provided notice, we had literally two days to do something because the final filing date for somebody to, or the public, anybody to go ahead and apply for this position, put their name in for the ballot. I don't feel that there was public awareness because it happened so fast, so anybody could have put their name in, just, I mean, or the other option would be that we leave it vacant, and then we as city council members go ahead and appoint city staff when November comes around. I feel that there was no discussion, this is my opinion on it, because of the August 10th date. I feel that we didn't have enough notice to even consider as city council members to say, "Are we gonna go move forward with the ballot?" Public, there was no public notification. You know, with city council members, when there's a vacating seat coming, such as the election for November, we know what council members are gonna be moving out, how many seats are available, public gets interested, they put their name in for election. In this case, in most cases, this city clerk position, people don't even know that it's an elected position. So, when the public isn't notified, or there's not enough time for public to even put their name in, I think it's due diligence for the city council members to say, "Okay, look, we need to go ahead and leave it as is, and then go ahead and move forward in November and appoint a city staff member such as other cities do." We have city managers who are appointed into the city clerk position, and we have other city staff that are appointed into the position. I just feel with the lack of information that was provided, I also, as we're talking about goals and priorities, the city image, so we talk about transparency, we talk about, you know, being that open slate to make sure that the public knows what's going on. I really feel as far as my concern for our city goals and priorities, when we come down to our city image and the perception that the city puts out there, I, as a council member, feel that we need to do our due diligence, and I feel there's a conflict of interest. So, when you have, and I completely understand that it's two different positions, and it's, regardless whether it's a big position or a small position, I feel there's a conflict of interest, having folks in the same family, whether it's a mother, daughter, husband, wife, to be working in the same office. There is no legal situation that indicates, I spoke with Tim, our attorney, there's no legal aspect saying that there's an actual conflict of interest, but as far as the city perception, city priorities, as far as our image, I think it is something that we should be looking at. It also lends to favoritism that I'm not keen of, and these are my perspectives. So, with that being said, I honestly cannot support the appointment tonight.
Through the vice mayor?
Yes.
I have a question of the current clerk. Would you have been up for election this year, or would it have been in two years from now?
Yes, this year.
So, that position was open regardless of whether or not you were going to vacate the position, and anybody could have applied for that position. It was available to apply for even prior to when you made notice that you were going to vacate.
Correct.
I will make a comment regarding that. The reason that there's the five-day extension typically for a sitting elected position is so that if it does go past the time of the regular, then the citizens can go out and apply in that last five days, knowing that the sitting elected official is no longer gonna be there. So, that did not occur. There were only two days' notice, so because of circumstances beyond control, there was a situation of only, actually less than two days, once it would have gotten out. It would have been a one-day notice. I think there was, it was unfortunate, and it's something that needs to be, this position needs to be addressed in a different manner than what is being done tonight. My comments are gonna come out now. Actually, many of them the same, but not exactly as the other council member. But I am requesting that county, the council attorney, give a written opinion on non-conflict of interest. For one reason, many departments have to have a sign-off and a signature, an official by the city clerk. So, we do not know that if some of the voting that we have to make, that, you know, the sitting members would have, would actually have a conflict of interest until we go through and find out what has to be signed, what has to be approved by the city clerk, and as to whether there would actually be a conflict of interest or not. It's a little bit more complicated than just husband-wife situation. It has to do with the operation, full operation of the city. So, there could be some there. So, I'm just asking, before I move forward with this or an alternative is chosen, is that a clear no conflict of interest must be established. And knowing that departments have to use or utilize her, I don't think that there's a clear conflict of interest, that there is none. So, I want it to be a written opinion of our county council based upon all that research. Other than that, I would like to do the actual alternative. So, I'm going to ask for the vote.
Through the mayor before we, or the vice mayor, excuse me, before we do that, I have a question of council. If we were to do nothing tonight and not appoint the vacant position, and the election takes place in November and the individual is elected, there's no, nothing that could be done at that point anyhow, is that correct?
If I understand your question, Councilmember Dukes, yeah, once we go through the election, whoever the voters elect, that person's gonna be the city clerk, whoever's elected by the voters in the election.
Regardless of what we do tonight, right?
Right. Whatever you do tonight or the next meeting is only for the rest of her term, which is through November.
Correct.
So, it's a couple of months.
As I have said, there is no documentation for clear non-conflict of interest, and I don't think that that needs to be satisfied before the election actually occurs so that we have a clear picture as to whether there is or not. So, and this is something new, never been, you know, had come up, so we need a clear picture of that.
Through the mayor, or through the vice mayor. For yourself, Tim, and I think you pretty much answered that question, is regardless of what the outcome here is tonight, whether we appoint Tricia as the city clerk, or whether we appoint the city manager to finish out, we'll go out, what, less than 60 days, and the election's coming out. And I believe, Terrell, since you're out of the area, I guess, or you're no longer assigned in the city of Yuba City, so you no longer will be able to do city clerk business, and I guess, I'm not sure exactly, I mean, you're still doing some of the city staff work, and is that something that can be done with somebody within city staff that can handle the time-being stuff?
Regardless of whether I was the elected city clerk or not, as my position as the assistant to the city manager, my assignment is to support the city clerk functions.
So, maybe that's an option at this point in time? I mean, it goes back to the election, whoever the people elect, or who the people are gonna elect at that point in time?
I understand that, but the thing is, is if there is a conflict of interest established, then what happens with the election, even if they are elected? There's a conflict, there may be.
I want it to be completely clear that there is no conflict.
Is our city manager or our city attorney, do we have any kind of a written thing on conflicts?
I was just gonna respond, if I can, to what Mr. Vice Mayor just said. Hypothetically, let's say Mrs. Buckland does get elected by the voters. Sounds like she would, she's the only one on the ballot. If in fact it is determined that legally, you can call it conflict of interest or anything else, that is an improper, void, illegal, not illegal, but improper election, then she would have to vacate the position. That's just hypothetically speaking. So, if it is improper legally, if she did get elected, then she would have to vacate her position. I'm just speaking hypothetical terms right now.
I just don't want us to go down that path and find out. Only reason I'm asking that is because, just to be done, is because I found out how much the clerk actually has to do, or signing in different departments. I wanna make sure that there's just a clear path, that there isn't any. Because of so many departments, we'll be utilizing the clerk's signature and stamping or whatever as they use it.
Through the vice mayor?
Yes.
It sounds to me like that's gonna have to happen after the election anyhow to get that determination, because if she is elected at that point, nothing changes.
Right, but he can make that determination now with a legal documental opinion, through research.
Through the vice mayor. I just want, as far as the election is going for November, Mrs. Buckland is the only one on that ballot. So, most likely, it's gonna move forward in that direction. My stance tonight is that this was not handled, I feel, in the best interest with city council members and us as a group, as a unit, to say, "Okay, this position has been vacated, and we should actually meet, talk about it, and decide as a unit if we are going to move forward with an appointment within city staff and leave that position vacant, or make it known to the public openly so that we have other applications available." This, within a day's notice, literally saw in the paper that we have one, and I'm sorry, the perception, when it comes to city perception, city image, to me, I can't stand by that. I understand as November comes around, it's the one person on the ballot, it's gonna move forward, but tonight, with the way the process was handled, I can't stand behind it. I just honestly can't. It will move forward as it is, but tonight, my vote is that we accept applications.
Okay, I'm gonna open it to the public comment real quick before we go for the vote.
I just, Pat Miller, Seder County taxpayers, I agree with Stan Cleveland and Preet. The way that came about looks like insider information, and it was a setup deal, and I'm not in favor of any position being handled that way, so, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, since this concerns me, I guess I better address you. First of all, I think it would behoove the city council to read this. Terrell gave it to me. It outlines what the city clerk does, and that's where I think a lot of the question and a lot of the controversy is coming apart. The city clerk's office in Yuba City is an elected position. It has been an elected position. My understanding is a few years back, well, maybe several years back, it was brought in front of the voters to make it an appointed position. The voter spoke and said it's elected. Now, that said, what has been going on, or what has been occurring in this city, is that it has been appointed because no one tends to run for it. And quoting from this, in Yuba City, the city clerk is an elected ceremonial position with the responsibilities of the clerk's office performed by the assistant to the city manager, which is Terrell Locke. So, it makes sense for Terrell Locke to be the city clerk, which is how it has been. The problem is, Terrell is no longer living in the city. It is an elected position. Terrell cannot do that. Now, this wasn't kept under wraps. I heard about it, I don't know, a while before the papers got, you know, here, go fill out these papers, okay? There were other people in the city that were approached to do this. They chose to decline. What it was going to come down to is the city, yes, some other people were approached and declined, okay? So, what it was gonna come down to is if no one ran, it was going to have to be appointed by the city council. Now, if you wanted to have transparency and openness, to have it appointed by the city council, kinda goes into insider-type things. So, to have someone step out from the outside and go, "Hey, look, I'll go ahead and do this," because it does kind of keep you guys in check. The city clerk makes no decisions. The city clerk does not vote on anything we asked, I asked, and there's no conflict as far as I know. Yes, it's probably a good idea to have the attorney look at it, but from everything that I checked into before I even started down this road, it wasn't a problem, okay? It was basically, you know, it's just an overseeing of things. Yes, I'm gonna have some education to look at, but what I'm trusting is that Terrell Locke, who has been doing an excellent who has been doing an excellent job as city clerk and doing the functions of the clerk, is going to continue to do an excellent job. I will be there to just kind of be a little bit of a watchdog. But as far as being able to vote, have influence, or anything that goes on in the city council, that is not part of my duties. It will not be part of my duties. There is no problem with, like, you two getting together with more than one having a brown act. Nothing like that, because that doesn't come under me, okay? So this is where it's at. I just stepped out in faith, knowing that we needed someone to fill this. And, yeah, did it come two days before? Yes. But you know what? Cash and John Dukes also could have pulled papers two days before and ran for city council again without any notice to the public.
Please finish up. You've gone fast.
Okay, I'm sorry. What's going on? But anyway, so a lot of this does come down to the wire. But also, I mean, this is $75 a month. If you look at what the city clerk does, it's a full-time position. But that is Terrell's job, and that's how it's outlined.
You're continuing after the red.
All right.
Way beyond. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a misconception going on here. We do not have a document that actually gives us the information that it is not a conflict of interest in any way. I have insisted that when I am asked to do something and make a decision and a recommendation, that I have documents that are solid for that decision to be made. I do not have that. I cannot follow through with this until I have documents that are clearly no conflict of interest, just because it hearsay or whatever, it doesn't matter. I want that document in my hand, okay? And the staff knows that that's the way it is. You bring up a recommendation to me, I want to know how you arrived at that recommendation and the documents behind it supporting that decision being asked to be made. I don't have that in this case. So. Call for the vote?
I'll just make a quick comment to Mrs. Buckland. As far as the job duties, I did take a look at them. And it's not about the job duties. It's not about $75. To me, it's the perception of the city. And to me, as a role of the city council member, not to be notified. If there was a conversation going on before, this was the first we heard, so.
We did not know until the 10th.
We did not know until the 10th.
Late on the 10th, so.
Through the vice mayor, let me just make a comment. I know, I think a lot of this is going to be decided after the election. I mean, there's one person running and most likely one person's running, that one person is probably going to win. And I think for time being, even though we have a motion on the floor, you know, I'd like to change that for time being, and I don't know if we can take a vote on it, but amend or redo that motion. Perhaps to have our, perhaps a suggestion, maybe to have our city manager step in until the election is done to fill the role of city clerk.
That was going to be my comment, was to amend my motion to appoint the city manager as interim city clerk until the election.
And the election's done and the people can...
The election will be what the election is.
Yep.
And then also this, we need to know this before the election time, this conflict.
I think we can direct.
It's smart.
We could direct staff to do that without having that in the motion.
Correct.
Yep. So you had a motion on second thought?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? There you go, Steve. I know you don't want it, but...
I work for you, sir, so whatever you want me to do, I'll do for you.
You're it. Tagged.
Okay, I'm going to go get Mr. Buckland up.
Moving on to council reports. Report by Councilmember Ditball.
See, we had a couple of meetings with the summer break, not too many. But we did have the LAFCO meeting. And during that meeting, it was a short meeting, but we did go ahead and appoint interim executive director, Doug Libby, who is going to be taking that position in the meantime, while we're reviewing applications and so forth, to go ahead and get the permanent executive director in position. The other meeting was the transit meeting, and there was a performance audit. What did stand out from that meeting was, the performance audit was completed. And the focus on the audit was that we increase ridership, which we knew from before, but this time focusing more on the marketing, so different ways, and they'll be looking at that. Also, in addition to that, to modernize the dispatching, to be more effective and provide better customer service. That might also help with the ridership. Let's see. And just a side note, we had the community forum last Wednesday. It was another great community forum, lots of information. This one was on internet safety, cyberbullying, sexting. And it was two hours of just packed information from our FBI agent. And we will plan for another one in about three months or so. So I hope to see more of you out there. And I think that's about it for me.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Councilmember Dukes. Just have one item to report, and that was, last week, attended the reception for the new Ninth Reconnaissance Wing Commander, Colonel Larry Broadwell. And it was refreshing to be there with other community leaders and to welcome him and his family to our community. And that's all I had to report. Thank you. And moving on to Councilmember Gill.
Yeah, no real committee meetings. It'll be next week for the Sutter Beach Flood Control Agency, as well as the Finance Committee meeting, does some community functions. The new colonel of the base also had a function in Sacramento for the elected Asian Island Pacific, we were there, so, representing the city of Yuba City, as well as Darrell Steinberg and Cindy Cooper and few of the other ones. So a lot of hot air. That's all.
Moving on to, thank you very much for the, you know, short timers get an opportunity to do all this.
I was just, not that I was counting my meetings, since I'm not running again. I think I've got three more, three or four more meetings. But I'm working every day as, you know, all the way to the end. So I'm not, by all means, it is not on cruise control.
Do appreciate it. And moving on to a report from Vice Mayor Cleveland.
Thank you very much. I was also at the Yuba Sutter Transit Authority meeting. And Councilwoman Ditball did a fantastic synopsis of what occurred. So I will not add to that, except they're doing a great job in our transit group. I was also, attended the Beal Newt Commander event to welcome them. Sounds like he's going to be a great, dynamic leader out there. Also, just want to remind everybody that 9/11 is coming up. And there are many anniversary remembrances this time. I think it's the 15th. And so there's a lot of youth that are becoming aware of what really goes on in life, that it's history to them now. They weren't alive when it happened. So they don't know what it was, traumatic thing for our nation it was and the people. So we need to make sure that as many youth that we can get to attend and actually learn what that meant to the core of our nation and help them to understand why we're so passionate about protecting our nation from that ever happening again. So there's a couple of them in town, one at Yuba City High School. There's one at, one of the churches out here, Caber Christian Center. There's other little events that are going on in remembrance. So please try to attend. I know our, many different staff members will be trying to make them police, fire, and different ones are going to try to make it to them. Thank you. That's it.
Also was able to attend the dinner for our... He's our base commander, but he's more than that. He's also the wing commander. This gentleman, Colonel Broadwell, and his wife come to our community. They'll be staying for two years. And he is quite an asset to our community. He and his wife are going to be a great asset to our community. Found him to be very personable, very approachable. An individual who has a great amount of history with the United States Air Force, has rose to the level that he is at through a command structure that we have visited out at Langley. Was the executive officer to a four-star general, General Hostage, who members of this council have met with in the past. And he was a pilot of an F-22, one of the fastest fighter aircraft in the world. And this guy, this individual, this leader is going to take Beal to that next level. And we are very proud of the accomplishments of Beal Air Force Base, what they mean to our community, and certainly the interaction of the Beal personnel in our community. Also attended a SECOG meeting down in Sacramento. That's the Sacramento Area Council of Government, where I attended the government relations meeting. And basically, moving some appropriations. We found a little extra money for Sutter County and Yuba City through a process. And also for Sacramento County, they got a bigger chunk than we got. But I wasn't going to complain about the few dollars that we did get in return from an audit. Also, looking at just better ways to improve service to our communities through an auditing process and also being able to formalize contracts in a more streamlined process with SECOG. So was able to do that, that was just like a week ago. And then had to turn right around and shoot back up for other meetings up here. But that was the Regional Waste Management Authority, where we are undergoing talks and meeting with the public on the upcoming contract changes in 2019 with Recology, if there are going to be any changes, or what the public truly wants to see from the different agencies. So all of that information is being now directed back to the individual agencies, because each agency makes the decision on their own regarding this. The RWMA, or Regional Waste Management Authority, simply convenes to give just general direction to that body as it moves forward. That's all I have in meetings. Did you have something to add? Just before we close, if, when the students come up here, we're going to have pins for them. So they're being brought in, so don't run away. Stop by and get your signature and a pin. So the pin master over here will be handing out pins. That's one way of knowing that you were here. But we will adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of those nearly 3,000 civilians. The military and civilians at the Pentagon, certainly the Shanksville crash, and also in New York City. The 3,000 citizens that lost their lives there, the numerous and hundreds of firemen and the police officers that all lost their lives will adjourn in their memory.